It had some stuff in it. It's about having that talking to. I didn't look at that.
Okay, we are going to go ahead and call Amin to order. It is Tuesday, September 19th, 2023. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any minutes or reports received and filed on?
No, we do not.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got a Transportation Committee meeting tomorrow. I'm not going to be able to make it.
See, I won't either.
Harry's going to sit in on that and represent, so. Campbell Board of Directors meeting at noon, and I don't know if either one of y'all can attend that one. If, okay. All the fun stuff. Bid opening on Thursday. Chamber Connections is on my calendar. I don't know if I've gotten an email on that or where it's at. And that's about it.
Today, parks, is that right? At noon, Parks Committee meeting. Wednesday, I think we have a meeting on a juvenile center. Pole worker lunch at Allegiant on Wednesday. The Amtrak New Platform Dedication is on Thursday, and I have a meeting on Friday with State Tech.
Yeah, I'll be over at MU Hall tomorrow, so I won't be able to make any of that. Yeah, the ribbon cutting's 11:45 Thursday. I'm going to try to make that Saturday. I've got Sunday for Union Veterans. Sunday, somebody's got a birthday. I think it's the Western District Commissioner. Monday, we're having our first Cole County 250th Committee meeting, so that is all I've got.
Do you have the present purchased for that birthday person? Why else would you bring that up?
Presents.
Presents.
God, turn. Here, here, I got you.
Put that over on his side now.
Okay, give him. Whoops, that went, that's broke. Never mind. I'll have to get some new toys. Do we have any commission comments before we get out of hand here?
Better run already.
Okay. Bids and contracts. Signing of contract with BC Signs, awning replacement.
This was awarded last week, and I'm just needing the contract signed. It's for $24,342. It's for the awnings at the Health Department, the Assessor's Building, and the Core House.
Good. All right. I'll make a motion to sign the contract with BC Signs for...
$24,342.
$24,342. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zimmer Communications signing of contract.
We have two contracts. The first one's for $500. This one is, they're just going to be reviewing our current website and seeing if they can make it easier for juke tour applicants. We're not going to engage anything. We just want to see what they have to offer.
One at a time on these, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract for $500 with Zimmer Communications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next one is, it's $7,500. It's to put a landing page on our website for people to be able to fill out the applications electronically and send it to us electronically instead of downloading, filling it out, and bringing it to us. Just make it easier for applicants.
Yeah, we talked about this earlier. We should have been had this on there some way for us to be able to do these applications online. So what about other job applicants? Debbie, your Health Department, if somebody applies, do they have to print it out and bring it in here, or can they send it to us?
More, each kind of department has their own way of doing it. There is a, there is a way to do applications online on our website, but they need more secure because of, you know.
I would think all of them would need to be secure and encrypted when they come through, so.
And Civic Plus does have something that they offer, but for what the sheriff was wanting, theirs is less expensive for what they're doing. So, but I think eventually we do need to look at that.
Yeah, I think we do. So I'd like to try to take a look at that, you know.
Yeah.
It's hard enough finding people, but if you make it easier for them to apply, then that may help too. So, yeah. I don't know how about checking all the other stuff. That's something down the road, but I'm okay with the sheriff doing this one.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract with Zimmer for the landing page.
For the application for $7,500.
$7,500. Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval of ARPA project for HVAC.
Okay, you guys approved the HVAC agreement last week at some of the meetings. I just want approval that you want that to fall in the ARPA projects.
You were going to do the full amount. You said it was the easiest for you of keeping. So, yeah.
That's fine.
I think it makes sense. Let's get that spent up, so that way we don't have to worry about losing that on these projects.
I'll make a motion that we use the ARPA money for the HVAC project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and signing of annual contract for the maternal child health from MODHSS.
Good morning. As you said, this is just our annual contract renewal. The focus of this contract is maternal child health, and we have been focusing the last few years on safe sleep and doing education around safe sleep for babies and giving out porta cribs if people need a safe, safe place for their baby to sleep. So I just asked for signing of that contract.
I'll make a motion to sign, approve and sign the annual contract for maternal child health from MODHSS.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval and sign of contract from MODHSS for local public health agency infrastructure.
This is a brand-new contract from DHSS. It's a new program from CDC. I think that during COVID and the pandemic, a lot of deficiencies were identified because public health has been chronically underfunded for years. So there's a new contract. It's for about four years. Our allocation was $269,233. It's to be used for staffing, retaining staff. You have to provide a mental health or wellness training component as part of it for your staff, and then they also want to support performance management, strategic planning, and accreditation. So the actual budget I submitted was in the packet that I sent to you, but we have staff time in there, fringe, some supplies, and we also have a $65,000 contract in there that we would like to contract with a vendor to help us get accredited. The Health Department has not been accredited, I think, since 2008 or 2009, kind of before H1N1, and that was through the Missouri Institute for Community Health and Missouri Accreditation Board. Now there's a federal board called the Public Health Accreditation Board that's through CDC, and we want to pursue accreditation. It's called Fab, through Fab, but since none of us are experts, there's some consultants that can help us through that process, and the kind, this contract will pay for the consultant and it'll pay for the accreditation fee, which is around $20,000. So I've been working with Jessica for that vendor because they're on state contracts, so we won't have to put it out for a bid. We already got a quote from them for $65,000, which is 18 months' worth of work. We couldn't hire somebody to help us for that. So I think that I'm pretty excited about this contract because accreditation has been a goal of mine since I got to the Health Department, but it seems like we've always had a crisis and never the extra funding to pay for it, and this grant contract will allow us to do that.
Good.
So once we're accredited, is that a yearly?
Five years.
Five years, okay.
And that incentive funding that I emailed you about the other day that's going to be coming, because we'll be accredited, we'll be eligible for more state funding. Before, there was never a real incentive, like state funding wasn't tied to accreditation, but the new director of DHSS wants to promote accreditation, so there will be some funding tied to accreditation, along with training for me and for you.
Yes.
All right.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the annual contract, or sign the contract from MODHSS for local public health agency infrastructure.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval and signing of USDA grant.
So we, sorry, Eric. Chris, you just need front page signed on this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Don't have to initial over the page.
There's a page in the middle that I'll do about the other.
We could figure out which one it is. Sorry, Eric.
No, you're fine. We received word about a week and a half ago that we received the USDA grant for the rail spur and transload facility. That's in the amount of $200,000. Minimal RPC did the majority of the work, applied for this, and they've been a great partner on this rail project from the get-go. And so it's $200,000. It's with USDA, and we need to sign the request for obligation of funds. So I just ask that you approve that and that we sign it and move on to receive that funding.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the USDA grant for the intermodal cart.
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 Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye. Great news. Okay.
Did we have to do the, does that include the request for the obligation of funds, or did we need to do something different? That's all in one? Okay.
Okay.
I thought you said "and" in there, so I'll try to make sure we have coverage.
Okay. Good show. Okay, renewal of annual contract with Nurse Practitioner Heather Heinz.
This is our annual renewal with our nurse practitioner. She comes in still about twice a month and provides family planning services. No increase for the fee that we pay her.
I'll make a motion to renew the annual contract with Nurse Practitioner Heather Heinz.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So how many days is she in here? Two?
Two months.
Okay. I know we had talked about getting somebody more often for our county employees. I still think we need to kind of look at that and maybe go after something like that to see what we'd do with our health insurance, because if we keep them from having to go to the doctor and we're paying a little extra for a nurse practitioner, bigger more often, I think it could save us some money on that, but.
I don't think that's our specialty. We'd have to contract with someone else that we can.
Okay. And that's fine. I just, the nurse practitioner is on here, and I know there are other businesses that do that.
I agree.
So, you know, if it makes sense for private enterprises to do it, then it might be more reason for us to look into it. I know we looked into it before, and Sam was pushing for it pretty hard.
Well, we had, we had a nurse who was going to Maryville to become a nurse practitioner. My, my thought was, okay, we're just going to move her over into that, and then she was, State Tech took her away from us.
I'm going to back on my own.
Yeah, I like.
Yeah, I think it's worth investigating a little more again. I don't remember why it, it kind of lost steam somewhere along the line, if it was COVID or whatever.
I think COVID. I think it.
That's what I'm looking for, the sheriff. I don't want him.
But, yeah, you could do a clinic in the mornings where, you know, before you go to work, you know, even your families could, could go to, so.
Okay, thanks.
Clinic, so. Okay, services for Cradle Point Migration Contract with Huber and Associates.
So this is going to assist us with our vehicles and the NDTs and make it more secure network and also make it more efficient in doing so. And Brian says we have to have it, so on those three factors, that's what I would like to go ahead and ask your approval. It's $18,000. I'd have to pay it out of contingency, of course.
What Brian says?
It has to do with the communication from our NDT to the network. Is that all right?
Yeah, it's very similar to what we do with EMS right now.
But it'll be better because it's us, right, than EMS? Remember who's first.
Yeah, so this is the same configuration as what we currently use in our EMS department to connect the laptops to the county network.
Okay, secure.
Secure.
So, yeah. His little brother had to have it too. No, I'm fine with it.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract for the Cradle Point Migration Contract with Huber and Associates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Your coffee cup's in my office, too.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, has your name on it. That's why I know it's yours.
Thank you.
Thanks. Brian, are you staying for a close?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. Approval and signing of change order number one, 2023 Chip Seal Program.
So this change order is for the final closeout documents for the 2023 Chip Seal Program. There was actually a error in calculations in that project, so we were able to add an extra road to the contract for the year. In doing so, we increased our traffic control mobilization, but overall, we actually decreased the amount of chip seal we needed. This change order is a decrease in cost of construction by $8,062.2.
I like that.
Yeah, I was reading through it. I thought, like that. We got a little more done and still some money back, so. All right. I'll make a motion to approve change order number one for project number 2023-502-1.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, we breezed through that. Do we have any unfinished business?
No, but I will turn this report in. This report filed by RAC for their annual application to the county.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah. Okay. All righty, new business. Accounts payable review.
Actually, we'll ask for a payable accounts payable for the sheriff's key card, so.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Discussion of Chamber of Commerce Talent Attraction Project. I saw where.
Good morning.
Morning, Eric.
I think we have made copies of that proposal available to the commission earlier, but I have more this morning. Anybody, you want any?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I just got over your email. Yeah, I got your email.
This is a one pager that I think gets right to part of the matter, if you want to share what. Okay, there you go. There you go. So thanks for giving me a couple of minutes on your agenda this morning. That one pager just describes this collaboration that we've been working on for a little over a year. The first paragraph lists some of the organizations that have been part of that, including the CBB, JC Rep, the school district, several different segments of the city, the Board of Realtors, and the county. We did a market research study that was the first phase of our project about six months ago. The chamber stepped up and took on that cost on our own for about $20,000. Then we came back after the results of that study. It kind of identifies the points that we should make with selling the Jefferson City community to outsiders, but also selling it to ourselves as well from a talent retention point of view. As you all know very well, workforce shortage has, has been hurting our economy here in Jefferson City. We're not unlike most cities around the country, but all these organizations sat down and decided we weren't doing enough. Try to tell the story about what a great quality of life we have here in Jefferson City. So we started down this path with that market research study, then we did an RFP, had four responses from local marketing consultants. Ironically, those four proposals were only arranged about $3,000 or $4,000 difference from all of those proposals. The one we selected was a team effort from Image Mark and Cosmic Sauce, and it's a $60,000 program. It's mainly allowing us to build the infrastructure, including a website and social media content, a lot of video. In fact, 2/3 of the cost of this, this first phase will be video production, talking about different aspects of our community and why people should consider Jefferson City to be a destination. What we have done, the chamber stepped up and committed to 1/3 of that $60,000, again, for this phase. We are hoping that between the city and county that we can raise another 3, and that's why we have a $10,000 request in front of you today. We made the same request to the city, and we haven't got a response from them yet. And then we, all those organizations that I listed at the beginning have been asked to make a contribution to make up that final 3, about $20,000, and we're expecting all of them will be engaged financially in one way or another at different levels, but we think raising the $60,000 is attainable. We're about close to halfway there right now. So that's our request. We'd like the county to be a partner in this. Your presiding commissioner's been a part of the discussion quite a bit, and I think you have some details in that proposal on page 18, the services and budget summary, and you can see an itemized breakdown of the costs involved in this first phase. We want to gear this up, build the website, start messaging, and get some feedback from our employers and also the community about how this message is coming across. We expect to come back at a future time and try to increase the amount of paid social media advertising and other paid advertising that we would be doing in the region to continue this program. It really need, we need to make a long-term commitment to follow through on this in order to be effective, and we certainly would appreciate your consideration of our request to be a partner.
Well, we've got to do something. Jefferson City's stagnant right now, and so if we just sit back and do nothing, we're just going to wither more. So I think this is really critical that we be a part of it and, you know, we go out. I was impressed when they won, when they were interviewing people working here in Jefferson City, and a lot of younger, and I think one was from Boston, and what they liked about Jefferson City, what they didn't like. It was, it's kind of an eye-opener, but I think we potentially, I think we can, we can really benefit from this, so.
Gary, tell us, tell us about the link. When you say it's linked, we can be linked to it. What?
I'm sorry, Eric?
You mentioned that the county or the entities here, every stakeholder can be linked, L-I-N-K-E-D. Tell us what that means, to be linked to this.
We would build a website, and we would develop the video content, and then we would put a link to the CBB site, JC Rep site, the school district site, the city and county website, and we would encourage all of the partners and stakeholders in the program to add that link and so that people can come from this site to more specific information on parks or on housing or whatever their interest might be.
Childcare. We have that one talking about childcare. That's really important, too, because, you know, if you're working and your children aren't in school, you know, you have to do something with your children. You can't just.
Does that answer your question?
Well, yes, but, you know, I was looking for the payback. Okay, here's the cost, here's the payback. Where I'd see the link, you advertise Jefferson City and then click over to county, and when it pops to county, county positions available.
Exactly.
And the sheriff who stepped out, probably looking for another jailer to fill a slot over there as we speak, maybe the prospective jailer shows up there. I'm looking for the payback.
So just to give you one example of how these stakeholders can use this infrastructure, if you will, and the messaging, is the police chief, Chief Wilby, is launching a campaign to try to attract more law enforcement candidates. He need, he stated in his appeal to the City Council for funding that he also needed to sell the community. Well, we're going to provide him a tool to sell the community, and if we can link our efforts with his recruitment efforts, it'll be a win-win and be a lot more efficient.
And the last third of the 60, is that coming from private sources for the most part?
One-third from the chamber.
Right.
We're hoping for 1/3 from a combination of the city and county.
Okay.
$20,000 total, and then the remaining third will come from some of those organizations that I listed earlier. We're not going to private businesses in this first phase. We may have to go to private businesses in a future phase, but at least by that time, we will have honed the message and can show them the product that we're using and the way we're delivering that message. So we think we'll be more successful down the road, ask more private sector support from businesses and employers. I realize we're kind of asking you to take a leap of faith because you haven't seen any of this yet, and we haven't either. We're still working on the website, for example, but we hope it's a reasonable request and not too big a risk for the county.
I'm interested in it. I would love to be able to track the results, you know, if we can show the payback. That's key to me.
We can certainly, we'll have the metrics available on, you know, the number of views and clicks and all that sort of thing, which I'm not an expert at, but I've been told by the marketing folks that we can measure the amount of engagement that we get in this. As far as measuring new jobs, you know, that's going to take a while for us to really build a bit of that.
Are you looking for that funding now, or does it fit into our next budget year, which begins in January?
We can be flexible on that for a few months if you want to get into your next budget.
Okay.
You said long-term commitment, then. Are you looking at this being a yearly thing that you keep doing?
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably be back within the next year, asking you to support an additional phase, and that phase will be focused on a lot more paid advertising, pushing this out in the region that we identify where we think our best target audience is. So we will probably be back, but you can, at least you will have the opportunity to look at what we produce and how we're delivering that message. So if you get another request down the road, I think you'll be better informed and probably more comfortable making the decision.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, this is just the first step.
I beg your pardon, Jim?
If it was going to be a yearly ask?
At least probably another year. It's not, not something we plan to come back to you for a long term on an annual basis, but we're just getting this thing launched around the first of the year. We'll probably be back to you next year and ask for some more support.
I don't have any other questions right now, so.
I don't either.
Okay. We will keep working with you and.
Excuse me?
We'll keep, we'll keep working with you, and then we'll, yeah, I'll let you know what.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Appreciate your time.
All righty, thanks, Gary.
Thanks, Gary. Okay. Crisis Track Discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this morning, I asked that we move or make available funding that's in the budget, but that was allocated for another project to help fund Crisis Track, which is a but that was allocated for another project to help fund Crisis Track, which is a program that is used by emergency managers to track resources and equipment. It's also used during disaster declarations for individual and public assistance. Some of these functions, the data that we put in, we're currently using spreadsheets, both the county and city, to track that data. And then we have to put those into the proper FEMA forms. This application would allow us to track that data in almost a real time and have that come in so that you can input into the FEMA form that is already in the program, you know, print that off or send that digitally to the FEMA portal and hopefully speed up the process in disaster declaration and returning money. Some of the history on this is I've applied through EMPG Mini, which is the 100% form of EMPG grant, and it was denied as something that was not an allowable cost through that. I also looked into another grant, which is the Protection of Soft Targets Grant, and it was also not eligible. And so I've tried looking at other funding sources, ones that we typically use, and it looks like we might have to just pay for this ourselves, maybe continue looking for funding sources, but pay for this out of the budget. This would be an annual cost, so I'm also anticipating putting that ask into the 2024 budget so that we can continue this, not only through the next 12 months, but also beyond that.
Nick, is this the freed-up money that, from the bargain that you received on the engine repair?
We were fortunate that the repairs that we, we thought, we put the worst-case scenario of pulling the engine out of our rescue truck and pulling it apart. And so we were able to get, instead of 10,000, get 1,600 in the repairs in that engine, so they didn't have to pull it out and do all that stuff. And so there's money left in the line item for vehicle equipment and operation that I would ask that we be able to use that cost savings for Crisis Track.
So that's an $8,400 savings?
Oh, yeah.
Or 86 or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, we were fortunate that we didn't have to, yeah, pull the whole engine and...
And so what is the cost of this?
Thirty-six sixty?
Thirty-six sixty, yeah.
And then we were talking about this earlier, the, on that bid sheet, it does say the quote date was 12/21/22, quote expires 2/12/23, and you had talked to them, and we still just probably need to get something in writing and send it going to...
Yes, that they'll honor that. I spoke with them at the SEMA conference two weeks ago and told them that I was trying to get this onto the agenda as an item, but we had to wait to make sure that the engine didn't require further repair. So I think now we're confident that there will be no further repair. So that's, that's what's led us to today.
And then will you be able to put that in your request for the money that comes from them each year, or do you say that wasn't qualified as a cost that has to come from us from general revenue?
Yeah, I think it'll have to be a general revenue expense. I can continue to look for grant opportunities, but my traditional grants that I pull from, it doesn't appear as if any of them will cover this as a qualified.
Then where's that money coming from that fixed the truck, though? Wasn't that the same money?
That was general revenue. That was out of our budget.
Okay.
So this will still be city and county paying for this?
Well, that, yeah, yeah. We'll, we bill them with...
Yeah, okay.
Every quarter, yeah.
Yeah.
This is our portion of the match, then, I guess, is what I'm...
No, there's, there's no match. That's total.
That's total, so...
I thought for their budget, correct me if I'm wrong here, but the money we get pays for half, and then the city and county split the other half.
Up to a certain amount, the grant, and he's saying this would not be able to go against that. So you're going to have that whole amount there. Now, whether you build a city, half of that or a quarter of that is up to whatever arrangements.
I can guarantee we'll, we'll bill them.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to make clear.
Okay, I'm still not understanding. We're getting the money from the government, it's half of the grant?
We can't get the money from the government under those grants.
No, I've applied for them and they were, it was denied as a cost.
So this is just coming out of general, over and above what we budgeted? So the truck repair was over and above what we were going to have from...
I don't know if they would, you would like to pay for part of that truck at the time or not, but again, those grants that you have are a certain top limit, so there's no going over that amount. So I get, I am assuming that they wouldn't have been able to cover that truck either.
The, the way that EMPG has been structured the last couple of years, the truck wouldn't have been covered anyway. That would have had to have been a 50-50 county-city cost.
Okay.
And it was billed that way in, I believe we've completed the repair in the first quarter, so it was billed that way at the beginning of the second quarter of this year.
If, this is a big if, it didn't happen, but if the truck repair cost, cost $10,000, you wouldn't be here today asking for 36.60 for this, not out of that fund anymore.
Correct.
You'd be asking for above and beyond the 10.
Correct. I would, I would have to wait until the next year's budget.
So, I mean, it was your good fortune to budget at 10 and come in at 1,600.
We were fortunate to, right, not have the repairs.
Our good, I should say our good fortune, not, not yours, but ours. And, and you, you ran the traps on other opportunities to pay for this with other grants, and it, those, that didn't work.
That's correct, yeah. They didn't pan out. It doesn't appear as if, through my traditional means of grants, that that would be, that program would be an acceptable cost for them.
So let's say we go forward with this, well, this is sort of the same question I had for Gary from the chamber earlier, is how do we see the payback? Where, where do we see the, we see the cost, now, now measure the value. How do we do that?
Well, my hope is it's not only just a force multiplier, giving us the ability to enter data in so that it takes less time out of Tracy and I, and also the folks who would be doing damage assessments for our individual and public assistance. It gives the public the ability, a link through our website, to give the public the ability to have a portal so that they can report their own damages, and that will help them also receive the, if we get a Small Business Association, SBA loans or anything like that for their costs, that would help us facilitate that and have their paperwork streamlined. It also gives us the ability in the program to build incident action plans, so that would help the hazmat team when they get onto sites. Currently, we actually work pretty closely with the ambulance coordinator, and they have a system that builds those. And so there's a couple of times at which we've been able to use that, and it's both of those programs, the one the ambulance coordinator uses and this program are both the same company, parent company uses it. And so we would have the ability to have a familiar program. I think, I think those are kind of the main benefits. Force multiplier, I think, is the big one. Having to do everything on paper twice is, is just a task that takes up a lot of time, especially in larger disasters. And my guess, being that, you know, the first disaster we have, the federal money that will come back from it, should be able to justify the program in cost.
Okay.
Yeah, we were talking about it earlier, and I thought one of the nice things was when you fill this out, it can be transferred over directly, I guess, is, so there's your time, but then there are your other, others doing the damage assessments, whether it be the sheriff, EMS, public works, health department, they should be able to go into it.
Yeah, there's an app.
Not have to give you a different report like you would probably get any other time.
Correct. My understanding from the tornado is we had Red Cross and Baptist Charities, and when you get their paperwork, they're not all the same. But this is available on an app, so anyone can download it and then do damage assessments that will come into us as we're monitoring it in the Emergency Operations Center.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, yeah, I'm good with it. I mean, we had the money in the budget anyway, and it's going to be a yearly thing, so we need to look at it next year's budget, too. And I guess probably that's what we need to look at for, like, the last presentation, too, that Gary get, I guess we could have told him we'll look at it for next year's budget. That would be my plan and...
Okay.
Works for you.
Yep.
Do we want to find out if they're going to honor that contract first or go by what they say, and if something's different, we'll just approve this amount, and if it's different, then we'll revisit it?
Yeah, I can, I can absolutely do that. And I know we talked a little bit today, but if we wanted to prorate the remainder of this year and then put it for, you know, 18 months or whatever the case may be, you know, we, we could ask for that as well if you wanted. So then we wouldn't have to come around until the 2025 budget.
Well, if we add it to your budget for next year, then we'd just be writing a check September 18th next year, right? So, yeah, I was just looking at that earlier, as if something kind of came up, but I think if we have the money in there, if we're going to do it, just do it, so.
Okay, I'm good with that.
All right.
All right, I'll come back with a quote then.
I'll make a motion for approving the purchase for the, is it Juver?
Javari.
Javari.
Crisis Track.
Contract in the amount of $3,660.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. LEPC grant.
The LEPC grant early on this year was, was kind of rushed, and we did not get all the projects completed in time. And so the Phase Two has now come out. The LEPC, what, what we did last year was we were able to come to you all and ask you all if you would set aside, as the county has a budget line item for LEPC, if you would set aside some money for that grant and then be reimbursed. This year, we have not applied for anything yet, so, but I did want to kind of let you all know about this opportunity. It is a 100% grant, and I don't have the complete totals, but it goes up to $100,000. Currently, we have about 86, almost 87,000 worth of projects. This would complete our medical exams that we actually applied for, but we couldn't complete in time for the earlier grant. The SCBA, which is those tanks that the hazmat team uses when they go into buildings, you know, to have their own oxygen source, those, unfortunately, we couldn't get done with that grant. And then there's, the grant allows for the thermal, or allows for a drone, but thermal drones especially, as a hazmat team has or had in the past, I should say, a thermal drone, but we haven't been able to operate it because it's, it's now aged out. And so there's no applications that connect to it. And so I can fly the drone, but I can't see anything. And so we have to, we have to look into that as well. And then hazmat supplies, which that's usually like gloves, brushes, towels, you know, things they use for decon typically. And then the city has not given me any projects yet, but the fire department's looking into it. I announced it at the chief's meeting, and I don't know if any other departments are interested, but, you know, we're going to try to call a meeting with the LEPC, a special meeting for Thursday, and get these items addressed and then approve or deny at that time. But I wanted to ask, or wanted to give you all awareness and then ask, in a future date, that we would be able to kind of have the same arrangement as we had earlier this year in setting money aside as, you know, we get that money back, we can have it paid back to the county.
Hope for 100% grant, we're stupid.
Well, yeah, I hate to leave money out there sitting on the table.
Yeah, that's...
But I just wanted to answer any questions, if you all had any of me of this Phase Two project.
I'm, I'm okay applying for it. That's what the basic question is, is applying for the grant.
Correct, yeah. If, if we apply for it, you know, are you guys in favor of having that money set aside?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I don't think so. We got...
All right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Gary?
Yes.
I used to know.
Oh.
I mean, yes, yes. But we don't, this is discussion.
Just discussion, yes.
This is discussion, yes.
Yes, okay, perfect.
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you all very much.
All righty. Thank you.
Discussion and approval of EMS server room project.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I apologize, I was having some trouble with my email, so I could not get you the documents, but I believe I've had conversations with each of you about this. So several weekends ago, we had a server failure in our building, which severely impacted functionality of not only our organization, but the communication center as well. Through some good MacGyver-ing, Brian was able to go out and source parts. Those parts are not necessarily of server-grade quality. In fact, I believe they came from Best Buy in order to get one server back up and running and restore functionality. During that, we did have to shift some of the software that we use to the courthouse servers that we keep here. So we are reliant on internet connection to utilize those software pieces. As we know, there's been several internet disruptions over the past couple of weeks that have limited functionality of that. A bigger history of the server room and what we've kind of done, obviously, South Ridge has gone through many iterations, and we've kind of accumulated stuff and patched things together. We've never really bitten the bullet and quote-unquote "done it the right way." So this is something, you know, that I've focused on over the last two years, is when we have the opportunity to clean things up and do it the right way, I like to explore those opportunities. So through conversations with Brian, he's recommended a replacement of two servers and a storage array, and then also doing the wiring work in our server room to really give us a finished product. This is not a sports car. This is a dependable Toyota that's going to last us for the next five years compared to the rusted-out pickup truck that we've had for, for a while now. So we have two different quotes here. Both of the hardware items are on contract. The two server clusters are a total of $26,888.48. The storage array is $19,573.32, and then we're estimating no more than $2,500 for the wiring, wiring work. Total project cost $48,961.80. I know there have been questions about, do we do it now? Do we try and piece it together? Brian is out in the hallway, so you can put him on the hot seat if you want, but quote-unquote, he strongly recommends doing this and not waiting for another year, and I don't think I've ever heard Brian say that we should strongly do something. I mean, he's pretty adamant about it, so. Happy to answer any questions. I know it's a big number, but I do believe that this is the first step in, in doing it the right way.
Well, visually, you've got a rat's nest next to a, kind of a sleek-looking vehicle.
Yeah, so I, I believe Commissioner Otto's been the only one that's been out of there, so, out there lately. So what we've done is really, this is a, in our server room, we have three different pieces of functionality in there. We have the phone system, we have the radio system, and then we have our server array. So we've actually done two out of the three pieces. And if you look at the phone system, it's in a nice cabinet, everything's wired, everything's tied up, looks very nice. We have a floor-to-roof-ceiling cabinet for all of our radios that's been cleaned up. I think some of you have seen the old picture of the hut where the radios were stored before with the wires coming out of the roof. All of that's gone and cleaned up. So now, really, the only piece that is really out of place is, as Commissioner Otto stated, the rat's nest that is this server rack. So if this project is done, it will really look efficient and clean, but more importantly, take any of the variables out for the next five years because this does come with a full-service plan. So peace of mind for at least five years.
Well, we talked about it last week, and I ran Brian across the coals and then I ran Chief Way across the coals for a bit. Put in simplified terms, if one part of it goes down, we're not even sure the other part will talk to it that well, and...
On the old system?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, after talking to him about that, I pretty much have me... So, um, I mean, after talking to him about that, I pretty much have me talked into getting it done and let's have it ready to handle a, a problem if there is one. But what about with the new building coming over here? Is that server all gonna stay over there then?
Yeah, so we, we've talked a little bit about that and, and regardless of, um, how we set this up, one building is gonna have to look to the other building. So the building that houses the server is gonna be the brain and, you know, it's gonna have to communicate to the other building. And we've really had some thoughts of, does it make sense to move that downtown? But the one big factor is that the communication center is staying at South Ridge. So if we were to have some sort of internet issue and all of the servers were now located downtown, that functionality would then essentially be severed. However, if we leave the server room at South Ridge, there's a point-to-point connection there. So, um, while I may be without email or video conferencing for an afternoon if we lose internet, uh, the communication center will stay fully functional. So that's why we've arrived at the situation that it's best to keep it at South Ridge.
Okay. Yeah, this is somebody, somebody else brought that up. Actually, I thought it was a good question, so.
Yep.
Wanted to see how that's gonna be handled.
And then the other piece, you know, we, we talked about adding redundancy, but, you know, we kind of arrived that it would pretty much double the price to put a system in the new building and a system at South Ridge. So, uh, we didn't think that that was the most appropriate choice either.
I would ask that you do this. Take some before pictures.
Yep, will do.
Because the optics there are awful. I'm not even sure the insurance carrier would like what he'd see in there, but.
Uh, the other good news is, is that once this is up and running, we can get, uh, some of our stuff off the server that we have down here, relocate it back out there, um, take some of those variables out as well.
Good.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, I just asked for approval and then, uh, signing of the proposal with, uh, Huber and Associates. And then all of the hardware is on, uh, co-op purchase.
You got that, yep.
Total price was forty-eight thousand nine sixty-one and eighty cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the EMS server room project at a total cost of forty-eight thousand nine sixty-one point eight zero.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Why, we just zoom through that too? Do we have anything else? Yes, sir.
I got something, um, just a few minutes. So last week, I attended the City Public Works and Planning Committee meeting. Uh, there was two items on the agenda and thankfully, uh, David reminded me that the meeting was taking place. In the future, uh, I do, I have that on my calendar every month. It's always the second Thursday of every month. And it seems like, at least more likely, there's a lot of city-county cooperative project items on that agenda. So the two last week in particular, um, with the city, um, putting on the shelf the Monroe Street expansion, two-way, whatever you wanna call it, uh, that frees up some money, uh, about two-point-seven million roughly. With that, uh, a few possible alternatives to that kind of have arisen, uh, Madison Street, improving that from Cap, Capital Region down to Dunkland is, is probably the more favorable one that they mentioned, uh, last week. Jefferson Street improvements are a possibility as well. So those were discussed. No, really, the only reason that was on the agenda was the city staff would like some direction as to which way to go. And so it was discussed. Uh, nothing in particular, just those thrown out there. So I think that's gonna be an evolving process. Um, I did mention there that, um, with the Railsburg project coming in, you know, beyond what we had grants and appropriated money from city-county funds, uh, there's about, give or take, about one-point-two million that, you know, we're having to make up the difference. So I did throw that out there as a possibility.
Does the two, does the two hundred you talked about earlier today, uh, that you picked up on another grant, does that knock that one-point-two down or?
Matt sent me some numbers on that yesterday when we were talking. Um, I'd have to hunt for them. It knocks, I think we were about one-point-four. We've had some change orders and some items come up. Um, and, you know, commissions approved a few things, so the, the two-hundred thousand kind of covers most of that.
Okay.
We're back down to, we're about one-point-two is where we're at. So, uh, I did throw that out as a possibility of maybe they'll, they'll consider, um, upping with, originally, we had eight-hundred thousand cooperative monies, four-hundred each, uh, possibly upping that. Um, if you look at the, the line items that they have kind of listed in the cooperative project list, there's one for economic development. And so there is some money that's not really spoken for right now, so possibility. The second, uh, big item, really big item, was the High Street Bi-Duct project. Bartlett West is the engineer, engineering company working on that and they presented about five or six different options. Going back a while, the price tag has grown to about twelve million. And these options that they have come up with, um, probably the, the better of the five or six is about eleven-point-three million. And that's in today's numbers, so you can assume twelve's gonna be probably the number. So, uh, with that, I think in, in the funds that we have right now, there's about five hun, five million available to put towards that project. So obviously, we're gonna need some additional funding to make up that difference.
Yeah.
So.
I still wanna look at federal infrastructure money for that.
Federal, state, I think there's options out there. We just need to pursue them.
We do, yes.
The, um, Madison Street has some appeal because it, it does, uh, address the cap region. Instead of their back door looking better or access to the backside, it, the front side might be better. Or that's just moving it one block. Uh, Jefferson Street doesn't have that same flavor to it. But then again, the cart terminal is, you know, that's high on our list of priorities.
Right.
To get that as much as we can to make that as successful sooner than later.
So like I said a little bit ago, we got, I think, about two-point-seven million in what was allocated for Monroe Street that's available. I don't know that that much needs to be spent on Madison, so there might be an opportunity to do multiple projects with that.
Right.
Um, one thing I suggested, and I'll suggest it to you too, is that we have a city-county kind of working group to kind of work through some of these things. I think the Monroe Street change kind of caught us a little, little off-guard. And that's fine. That's the direction they wanted to go. Um, but moving forward, you know, I, maybe one commissioner, one or two councilmen, mayor, I don't know how you wanna prepare the group, but at least meet regularly to kind of head off some of these things and be able to have a plan to present.
I think it would be good for one of the three, uh, one of the three of us, uh, to be at that, uh, Public Works meeting. And now it's on your calendar, right?
Yeah, it's definitely on my calendar.
Second Thursday?
I attended one and it was, it does cover a lot of.
And there are actually five council members on that committee, right? All, just this much short of a quorum. So they, what they do there probably carries a lot of weight in front of the whole council.
It, it does. I mean, it's, it's an important committee and, I mean, you're looking at, they, they cover not just the cooperative projects we do together, but they cover everything, public works and planning. So it's a lot. So, but yeah. Like I said, it's on my calendar and, um, in the past, there's been times I couldn't attend because we had a road and bridge meeting or traffic and safety. I'm gonna make sure we schedule those not on second Thursdays to avoid that conflict. So if me, one of you, both, at least one of us attend, I think it's helpful.
So can you send us the calendar invite for that?
Yes.
And there's no reason that all three of us can't attend. We've all attended other meetings that were invited to. We're not gonna be voting or making decisions at that meeting, but it's no different than any other meeting we sit in at, gathering information, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, nobody sits on the decision-making part of that committee or anything, right?
You would be basically a guest, like I am now, so.
I still wanna be careful with the five, this five-year money we get, we, and we promise the citizens. And if we start taking money and doing other things, I, I kind of have a little issue with that, so.
Yeah.
So when you said Monroe's on the shelf, all of the Monroe is on the shelf, but a portion is being done.
Yes, so they had.
So, it's, I don't know, it's, you can tiptoe around it a little bit. There's some being done on Monroe now.
Well, and at Madison.
They had three-point-five million for Monroe, eight-hundred thousand already signed and agreed to by city and county for the section from the expressway to south of Dunkland Street to improve that.
That first block, yeah.
Area right there, yeah. And then the next amount of money was supposed to go to, um, fixing up the rest of the road and then getting it to the one-lane section and winding that to two lanes. So.
It's already two lanes.
It could be two lanes.
It is two lanes. They just park on one lane.
Yeah, my, my suggestion was take on-street parking off.
Drive through there. Each one of those houses has off-road parking unless I'm mistaken. So you drive through there, there is off-street parking, so they could, they could do that. I'm not, I'm not saying anything bad about them not doing that project at the three-million-dollar price tag. So, but I think there, you could scale it back quite a bit and still get something done. But that's up to the city.
There's opportunities to go back into the drawing board and see what other options are out there for less. I will say that, um, a few years back, Cap Region purchased some homes there for some parking lots and their expansion. And in that section, they actually did, like what Jeff said, they took a one-lane section and basically striped it for two-way traffic. And that's down to the next street is below Cap Region. So it's definitely doable.
Yeah.
But those, those things can kind of be hashed out over time. But, uh, the main thing I just wanna point out is, you know, as, as we make some decisions for these cooperative projects, just making sure that the city and county are communicating and on the same page will go a long way to, to seeing these projects done. Wildwood Drive extension, getting that to actually make it happen.
Was it three? Three, five-year or two, it was?
You know, it's, it's more than a dozen years, so.
It goes back to two thousand seven.
But I'm saying the five-year periods, yeah.
Yeah, I was a young county engineer working on that project when it started. So it's nice to, something like that. But it took, uh, it took the city and county working together to find a solution to it.
Yeah.
So, um, anyway, just wanted to bring you up to speed on that and just, uh, do our best to try to be in tune to what they're doing and vice versa, I think.
If they're not gonna do that on Monroe, then they have money left over. They can overlay some roads that we have that need to be fixed. Would be huge. Madison is terrible.
Madison would be a great project. It is kind of the unofficial on-ramp from Highway fifty to southbound or westbound Highway fifty-four and vice versa. So that's, that's a pretty heavily traveled route and it does need some work, so.
Yep.
And the state has just, uh, done an overlay there, haven't they, coming off of fifty-four, onto Madison and stops right in front of the health center?
Yeah, that, that's the main entrance into Capital Region. So it's, it has a lot of benefits to the whole region and it's in the same area as what Monroe is, the whole Munit Burton area, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Eric.
Anything else?
Ready for close?
I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section six-ten-point-zero-two-one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the commissioner will go into closed session to discuss the following. Existing or proposed security systems under Section six-ten-point-zero-two-one subsection nineteen.
Second.
We're all called, please?
Sam?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So basically, we're just saying that, that we would put it on.